And I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Haverford Township Planning Commission for July 25, 2019. And our first applicant on our agenda is R.S. Holmes, LLC, 301 and 305 Ellis Road. Yeah, I'm sorry. Take the roll first, I'm sorry.
Mr. Capuzzi.
Here.
Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Mr. Galman.
Here.
Mr. Poynt.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Okay, and I'd like everyone to join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Okay, thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is the subdivision of 301 and 305 Ellis Road for R.S. Holmes, LLC. And I believe our applicant is present.
Chairman James Buckler, on behalf of the applicant, R.S. Holmes. Present with me today are Jim Musselman from Yon Engineering, who's a project engineer, and Chris Sexton, who's one of the principals of R.S. Holmes. By way of brief overview, this is a subdivision of approximately two-acre parcel of land to be subdivided into -- contains an existing home. The plan is to subdivide the property into two, one-acre, approximately one-acre parcels to demolish the existing home and to build two new homes on the property. The land about -- or the plans are compliant with the zoning ordinance, with the exception -- well, and it's not really non-compliance. There's a special exception which is required in order to -- because a portion of the driveway crosses a steep slope. We have filed an application for a special exception with the zoning hearing board. We have a hearing scheduled in August. I expect that's going to be an issue. We're disturbing less than the allowed amount of steep slope. There's this area right in here, across here, is steep, this steep slope. And the amount of -- and it's just this little corner right here, the steep slope, is being disturbed. It's about 700 feet of steep slope. This is a downslope, so we're not cutting. There'd be a little bit of fill, and I expect, I don't know it for sure.
You'll have to speak at the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So there's some cut involved. I mean, there's no cut involved, there's some fill, because you have a slope down from the road. I anticipate that that's probably a man-made steep slope that was probably made to cut, so you had a flat front yard for the existing house. It's been there a long time, so it's hard to establish that, but I think I would be pretty sure, given the surrounding topography, that's the only steep slope in the area. And my guess is that, right there by the road and across here, where across the front of the road, going up Ellis, it was created so that the house that's there has a reasonably flat, fat, front yard. The -- there's one issue, I suppose, that I want to highlight for the planning commission other than, in addition to answer any questions you have, but there's an issue, from my perspective, that relates to the sewer. Right now, I'm sure you're aware, there's a problem with connecting public sewers, getting approval to add capacity to this public sewers in Haverford Township. We, right now, the existing house has a public sewer. It's connected to public sewer, and we would propose, in the long run, to have both of the homes that are being built connected to the public sewer. But that would require an additional, one additional capacity. Your ordinance makes specific provision for onsite systems on lots of more than an acre, which we are, and so we are proposing to provide for all of the necessary connections, laterals, et cetera, and a commitment to connect to the public sewer if and when we can do that. But in the interim, if in fact we're ready to build a house and occupy it, we are asking to have permission to have an onsite system on one of these lots, of course conditioned on satisfying all of the requirements of the Department of Environmental Protection as to their planning module, et cetera. I've discussed this with Mr. Faulkner, he knows our position. We have had conversations with the appropriate parties at DEP, and they have no objection to that proposal, so long as we comply with their requirements. As far as the other engineering comments, I think that there are some that bear discussion. For the most part, the June 26 review letter from Mr. Faulkner, our responses are that we will comply with those comments. I would point out to you that comment number two, which talks about the setbacks, will require that we make some modifications to the plan as it relates to the placement of the house. You know, Ellis Road is, it doesn't, it seems like that's all one road. We talk about the Ellis Road frontage, it's Ellis Road in front, and then it turns around. So both sides of our, of a property front on Ellis Road, but on the golf course side of Ellis Road, the part of our, of the property that's across from the golf course, the homes on that side, on that section of Ellis Road, are further from the median setback is, in the neighborhood of 90 feet on that side. And we are showing a 50-foot setback, because that's what the ordinance shows. So we understand that we need to modify the placement of the house and perhaps rearrange the dimensions, and that house was a, was one that the owners have, or the developers have built before, and they had proposed to build it, but it's not, there's nothing magic about it, it's just a concept, and we can arrange to do that, and we will arrange to do that. We will commit to modifying the plan to comply with that requirement.
Going down the other side of Ellis, the side runs where the --
Where they're going to face now?
Where the driveways are now, right. How far back?
They're actually much closer, the average setback is 30 to 40 feet on that side. So we're --
So since you're facing on that road, that may have some effect also on what -- am I wrong about that? Should that have some effect? We're talking about if they're, if you're, if you're going to now orient the houses towards the other street, towards the other Ellis, and they're already not as far back, shouldn't that, 50-foot setbacks be reasonable? Or are you thinking you want to have them closer to the street?
I think Mr. Buckler's talking about the golf course side of Ellis, is what he's talking about. I don't think the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I don't think the other side of Ellis is an issue.
Correct.
Right, and why would, so you want this other house to be moved further back to lot number one?
Well, I believe the zoning ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, specifies 200 feet from, in either direction.
It's 300 feet, I think.
Or 300 feet.
Whatever, yeah.
Okay.
And I think, and we have an unusual property, because if we had a true intersection, it would be pretty straightforward, I think. Because we have a curve, I guess it's a matter of interpretation, do you go 300 feet in both each direction from the property and average them out, or do you treat this side and this side as different streets? I think that, my sense is a reasonable interpretation of the intent of the ordinance is that we would do that latter, because the point, the intent is to, is to keep the setting of the houses somewhat consistent along a line. And so that's what, how I propose to do it, I think that's the most sensible interpretation of the ordinance. So I, so our, the frontage of the homes that we have could actually, we're showing them 90 feet back, they might, might move forward. As a matter of fact, more likely than not, the corner house will probably have to move forward in order to be able to accommodate the change in the other side setback. And we're prepared to do that, and we have no problem with the condition of approval that requires that.
So on the golf course side, you're going to push that to 90 feet?
Approximately. I mean, we, yeah, we'll have to do the calculation, yes. So, and the houses could be, that, you know, we can accomplish most of that simply by taking that little addition off the side, which is a, which is an optional addition, which was just shown there, and moving the house over to the existing, you know, all the way over to the side yard setback. We'd have to recalc, rearrange the driveway setting, but really by doing that and moving it to the, closer to the front yard setback, we pick up almost all that we need to do that, and we understand that we'll have to do that. The other questions, I guess it's helpful, I think it's helpful to talk about the things that are questions in, that were raised by Chuck in his review letter. The other question, or the issue that I have is, there's mention of sidewalk, and I would, I would suggest that there's no purpose to putting sidewalk in this location. I'm sure you've heard this before, but it's, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, and it's a sidewalk in a place where you don't want to encourage pedestrian traffic when you get to the end of the sidewalk. And it's in an area where there's no persp, I've seen it, I've heard the argument, well, there's going to be future development, and eventually there'll be more sidewalk. You can look at these, at these lots, there is no, other than this corner lot, there might be one other lot within a half mile that is not too small to subdivide, so there's no potential that there's going to be another subdivision coming along anywhere along that section that's going to lead to a reason to have more sidewalks or anything else. So I would suggest that sidewalks along Ellis in that location are not only useless, but they're actually a bad idea, because you really don't want people walking along there and getting to the corner at Ellis and deciding to walk down Ellis. That's just not a place you want people to be walking. There is, there's a mention of street lighting, and I can only say that it looks to me as though there's already three streetlights on the road that front our property, so I can't imagine that there'd be any additional street lighting. And the, the, the street lighting section in the ordinance talks about street lighting as being something that's at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners if they think it's appropriate in a residential development. I think that language in the ordinance is generally, in the subdivision ordinance, is intended to address situations where there have been additional streets built, and so you need to think about lighting for them, and we're not making any additional streets. And as I say, there's already three streetlights that front on our property, two on, one on the golf course side, one at the corner, and one around on the front of our property, all of which are, you know, which are more than adequate with streetlight, consistent with the street lighting throughout that area, so there'd be no real purpose in additional street lighting. I think that we would obviously like to not include curbing and street widening, but I understand that there may be some more reason for that, and I suppose I would want to clarify that the street, as I understand it, is four feet under its, it's the 27-foot that's called for in the ordinance, and it's, currently is 23 feet, as I understand it. So we would be talking about, on our side of the street, widening it two feet along that portion of Ellis. I think that the other section of Ellis is, as I understand, that's a state highway, and so that's, and that's already to spec, so we're only talking about the portion across the frontage of Ellis. Other than those comments, all the other engineering comments are things that we're prepared to address and to provide the information that's required or been requested by Mr. Faulkner. And with that, I would, and Jim Musselman's here from Yon Engineering, as I say, and he's prepared to answer any engineering questions that you have, and we'll try to address any other questions that you might have.
To the sidewalks, are you in receipt of the letter dated July 18 from the Delaware County?
I, I understand, I've received their comment, and I've received their, and I, that's fine. I don't think that they have the perspective, the same perspective. I appreciate that it's in the ordinance, and it's easy to say, well, let's decide. I'm simply saying there's really no purpose to it. And I don't think, the fact that the planning commission, Delaware County Planning Commission made mention of it changes anything that I said about, about whether it serves any purpose, or whether it's a good thing or a bad thing.
I think that, as a board, we've been trying to encourage sidewalks, and we've heard exactly the argument.
Sure, I'm sure you've heard it from plenty of people.
But our counterargument to that is if everybody keeps saying it's a sidewalk to nowhere, then we'll never get sidewalks, and we're trying to encourage.
Well, I, I get that, and that's, and I understand that, except that what I'm saying to you is, we're talking about the last place in this, this little corner of Haverford Township, that, this is the last piece of ground that's going to be subdivided at any time unless you change your zoning ordinance and make the density a lot higher, unless there's changes in your density, there's no place else in here that anybody's going to be coming in to subdivide, and there's no, there's no opportunity for any additional sidewalk to ever be built. And so I would, I would suggest that this is a little different situation because of that.
Chuck?
I, I'm good for it.
Chris?
Chuck, on the, the comment number three about the side yards not being the aggregate yard requirement? Is it 50 feet for lot two?
Yeah. The way he's got it laid out, he's got 20 foot on either side.
Right. So you'll fix that?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. We'll just have to reconfigure the house. Like I said, the house that was put on there was a, was a concept, and we'll reconfigure the house.
I echo the comment on the sidewalks, we're trying to make sure that they do get built. That's it for me.
I have no comments. Thank you.
You're, you're, first of all, you're presenting this as a final plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I see you're nowhere on here, any requests for waivers or anything like that?
Well, actually, I apologize, that was my oversight. I, I meant to, in my presentation, indicate to you that we would be requesting waivers and that I would be submitting a letter to the township. I wanted to wait until after this evening's meeting to get the flavor of the planning commission before I did that, but we would be requesting waivers as it relates to the sidewalk. I don't know that a waiver is necessary as it relates to the street lighting, because that's not really, that's really at the discretion. I don't think there's anything that would require a waiver there. But as it relates to the, to the sidewalk curb, minimum part with, if, we would request a waiver if the, if the, if the planning commission recommended that we be permitted to proceed that way. And that was an oversight on my part in the, in the presentation. So we would amend the plan, it's got to be amended anyhow for a number of reasons.
Okay, in regards to your, your plan of putting in an on-lot system for one of the lots, the township code requires, you know, houses within 200 feet of a sanitary sewer to be connected.
Let me, let me, if I can, and I understand what you're saying, and let me just qualify that, let me just pull up the, because I printed out the sections of the code, they, they say more than that. Say, they say that whenever practicable, sanitary sewer shall be installed and connected to the township system, okay? I apologize, you know, here we are.
What, what section or what paragraph are you reading?
I'm looking at section 160B, 5B9.
Okay, that's the subdivision land development ordinance?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
The township has a chapter 149 covering sewage and drainage facilities?
Correct, correct. And, and I think, I, whenever, and I think it starts with the proposition that whenever public sewer is available, and right now, public sewer is not available, and your, and your, and your, or your subdivision ordinance has specific provisions, whenever it says, whenever it's impracticable to connect to the township sewers, onsite sewers may be permitted upon application and approval of the sewage enforcement officer in the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Resources. And that's in, that's section 8H of that, of that ordinance. And we have that situation. There's actually a specific provision in here for capped sewers, I'm not suggesting that, but there's, when, you start from the proposition that sewer is available, and if public sewer were available to us, we would have no question, no problem, no issue. We would commit, we would, and we are committing to connect to the public sewer the minute it's available. But right now, as I understand it, it's not available, and we have no control over it being available, and your ordinance has specific provisions that allow for public sewer on lots of over an acre when public sewer is not available, which is the situation that we have right now.
I don't know that I agree with your interpretation. There, we've processed many subdivisions within the Darby Creek Watershed, where the applicant has had to go through the planning module approval process to get sewage approval for an additional lot or two. And eventually, they get it. I wouldn't say that it's not sewer, isn't available, it may take a few months to get approval, but I would say it is available. There's no moratorium that I'm aware of that says that no development can occur within Darby Creek Watershed, it's that you have to go through that process of checking with all the townships down the line to make sure that they can grant one additional EDO. And in addition, in my 16 years on this board, no one's ever come in for an on-lot sewage application, but regardless, if you're proposing that, then you have to do testing, and that has to show on a subdivision plan. We can't just approve a plan not knowing where this system's going, if, if the ground even perks or anything like that.
Right.
I think putting that into the mix, you have a whole different planning.
I think you're right. I think, I mean, I understand, and I'm not, I'm not, I understand that there are things that have to be done on this plan before we would be looking for you to approve it or recommend it for approval. And I think, at this point, we, we filed the application, we wanted to come in front of the planning commission, discuss the issues that we have to discuss, and to find out what, what guidance you would give us as to, as to your position on some of these things.
I, my, my position is, I don't, I don't agree with your interpretation that there's no public sewer available. I believe it's available. I had some other, I guess, engineering-related questions. If your engineer is here, he can answer those for me.
Sure.
And maybe, this is not a question you can answer, but is your intent to develop both lots at the same time?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
No.
Okay, so if someone comes in and say, I want to, I want the house on lot two, then you would build that first?
I guess, I'm not sure, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
The reason I ask these questions is because, in order to construct, say, the driveway on lot one, you have to grade onto lot two.
Right.
So if lot two is built and developed, unless you've created some type of temporary construction easement on lot two, you can't build the driveway as shown.
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, I think that's an important point in my regard. And I think your plan has to reflect how these lots might be developed if indeed they aren't built at the same time. Or, or at the very least, maybe you have to put in the driveway for lot one at the same time you build lot two, if lot two goes first. But I think you have to account for all those possibilities.
I mean, that's something that we can handle with a note on the plan, that's not, that's not a, an issue.
I think it has more than a note. If you, if you transfer a prop, ownership of the property, a note isn't going to guarantee you the right to encroach on that property after the fact.
Well.
Again, in my experience, if you're proposing an on-lot system, a lot of townships require a replacement area.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And given the fact that you have steep slopes, and you have on-lot stormwater management facilities, there's isolation distance that have to be maintained between any onsite system. So again, if you're proposing that, you have to show it on an engineered drawing.
I, I understand that.
Okay. And the other thing is, do you know if any of the lots adjacent to you are on well, have private wells?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But I'm assuming they aren't.
Stains on, on both sides.
No, it doesn't mean.
I understand, yeah, I understand that maybe they aren't connected.
It's something you have to research, because there's about 100-foot isolation distance.
Would affect the location of the, we're, we would be on public water.
You would, I understand that.
Yes, yes.
And again.
Correct, I understand what you're saying, yes, yes.
I, I think the plans need to be updated as far as location of existing utilities. I believe there are sanitary sewer facilities, existing facilities on Ellis Road along the frontage of lots one and two, but I didn't see any indication of that on the plan. Same way with water lines?
We got that, we were waiting on that information. We finally got it.
I guess my point is, you can't present a plan and say it's final with all these items that still have to be designed and engineered. In my opinion, we're looking at a sketch plan that probably is going to change because of setbacks and onsite sewage systems and things like that. The grading plan, I think, on the design of the stormwater management system, one of the driveways had a six-inch-high concrete curb that was used to control runoff to an inlet, and that was, I believe, on lot two? Or am I wrong?
Yeah, it's lot one.
Lot one, all right. You had a six-inch berm along the driveway to direct flow to proposed yard drain. And looking at the perspective of the property owner, I mean, how effective do you think a six-inch-high berm is going to be as compared to, say, a, a concrete curb? If I have to maintain that, that system, and, you know, I don't, the common person doesn't understand these things, chances are that berm's going to disappear, and you're going to lose the effectiveness of your, of your system. And, and I guess, if it makes sense to do it on lot one, why wouldn't you do it on lot two? To try to collect that water in the same fashion as opposed to collecting it the way it's being proposed? Just a couple of thoughts that I had.
We can look at that.
Sure, sure. Okay. So, again, given the condition of the plans and the changes you're talking about making, I don't, I don't see us doing anything tonight in regards to recommend approval or anything. I think you have to come back with a plan that, that shows everything that you want to build and how it's going to be built, and make sure that, that all your i's are dotted and t's are crossed if you want it to be called a final plan. We need that list of waivers and your, your explanation as to why you think the waivers are, are acceptable or required. And I don't know, I mean, Kelly, where we stand with time on this thing?
We have until the September Board of Commissioners meeting for final decision.
All right, so.
About the end of next month, that's when we.
We meet again in a month.
Sure, sure.
And I think plans have to be submitted within two weeks of the meeting.
Right.
So that, you know, our township engineer has a chance to review them. So we may need a time extension, depending upon how quickly you can present all this information on the plans.
Okay. And I would be curious to hear from other members of the, of the planning commission as it relates to the couple of issues that I, that I wanted to get your, your feelings on, both, both the sewer issue and the, and the sidewalk issue. I'd be curious to understand.
Well, in my opinion, you're asking for other opinions. The submission seems to be incomplete, so I think it would be advisable to just take our recommendation and come back.
Okay.
As far as the sidewalk concerned, the county has a point in that there's only one property, which would be to the south of you, that doesn't have sidewalk, but from that point down to the YMCA, public sidewalk. So they raise a valid point. I understand what you're saying about a sidewalk to nowhere, and we've been consistent as a board as requiring sidewalks. Board of Commissioners might have a different opinion, and it's up to them to grant the waiver.
Sure, sure, yeah.
But I think collectively, we believe that, you know, if it makes sense to put it in, whether or not there's a missing link, you know, at some point in time, that might happen. When that property sells, maybe the township will, will make the owner put in the sidewalk. We don't know.
Yeah, we can't guarantee the future, but we can at least review this based on what the ordinance says.
Okay.
The ordinance says put them in.
But you have, you know, you have the opportunity to request a waiver and make your best case for why you think a waiver is warranted.
Okay, all right.
I don't think you will have the support of the planning commission, most probably, if you don't put a sidewalk at purpose, if they're necessary, and with the amount of rain that we've had this year, with all of the problems that we've had going up and down and along that, the Ellis Road where it goes down, down below, and the water just coming across, three times it was impacted. I'm just saying, you're not going to get. I'm just saying, I think you're not going to get support on the sidewalk. I think it would, I think it would help an awful lot in controlling the water.
I concur with Angelo on the sewer, too.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. plan and lot line. Good evening, Dennis O'Neill.
Good evening. I'm with Herbert McComby's office, and we're the engineer for Havreford Mr. Storage. Briefly, as the chairman indicated, there's a minor subdivision from parcel 1315 Lawrence Road to the existing Havreford Mr. Storage to accommodate an addition to the existing building. We were here a month ago. We took your input, and we went back and revised the plans, resubmitted them. We are not, we have zoning approval from the zoning hearing board, and we are seeking several waivers. We're asking for the curb and sidewalk waivers. In this situation, there's, we have about 50-foot of street frontage along the access road, and there are two driveways approximately 20-foot wide each that cross that 50-foot segment. So a curb would be depressed, there would be a very small section of elevated curb in between, there would be just two very minor segments of sidewalk, and then you'd be crossing the driveway aprons. Doesn't seem practical to be able to fit sidewalk in that small area. We are asking for relief on the street lighting in non-residential developments. We are providing a light at our entrance, which will also help aid for lighting up the street, the access road at where we're, we're entering our property. We're asking for a couple of partial waivers in that there's a requirement that names and property owners within 200 feet of the site and all utilities within 400 feet of the site be shown on a plan. In this case, this addition, all of the utilities servicing this addition are coming from the existing building. With the exception of this onsite stormwater management, there is no connection to any existing facilities or utilities around the site. You may recall that we discussed a couple of issues regarding the frontage of 1315 along Lawrence Road. Our office is in the process of preparing plans for future land development, so we're asking that those requirements for street trees, basically shade tree issues be put off until that land development comes in. Can tell you that we attended Shade Tree Commission on Monday night. That issue came up from the Shade Tree Commission about the shade trees along Lawrence Road. Mr. Celia advised them that we were working on another plan, and the Shade Tree Commission understood that, and that we do have to address it at the time we do 1315. We are not providing any trees on our property because of the cap, but we did show them our pretty extensive shrubbery and buffering plan that we're proposing along the Lawrence roadside with Arbivide and some other plantings that will not reach the cap level. And then I can go through the rest of the comments. I know there's a couple that we had some sticking points on. One had to do with the one-inch orifice in the structure, and we had quite a discussion last time about the bull run valve, and we're proposing to take that bull run valve out and reconfigure the outlet control in the manhole. I sent Chuck a couple pictures today. I have a sample of what we're proposing. The issue with the orifice is that the one-inch orifice tends to get clogged very easily. So what we're proposing is to use a three-inch pipe with a grate on it so that the water gets filtered before it gets... We'll still have our orifice, our outlet control, to control our stormwater, but we'll protect the, and it, this allows to keep a sump in that manhole so that anything that does get on here can fall off, have somewhere to go. We're going to extend the pipe to the top so that you have an access port to be able to observe whether, whether water's flowing through it. So we're hoping that this configuration of piping will address Chuck's concerns as far as the one-inch orifice. The other issue that I want to, want to discuss is the fire truck turning across the Gans property. When we revised our plan, we showed an existing 20-foot-wide easement that extends from the end of the access road, which is currently owned by the federal government, the Army Corps. There's a 20-foot-wide access easement that extends into the Gans property and the Mardenley properties and DCM. It splits that property line. That easement was created a number of years ago. It shows up on a, on a 1924 Damon and Foster Plan that we have, but there's no record of a, of a recordation of an, of an access easement in the courthouse that defines whose rights they are. It's been commonly practiced that everybody has a right to use that easement to access that industrial park. As part of the transfer of property from Mardenley's to, to Havreford Mr. Storage, they are currently working on a draft of that easement language, because part of that easement's going to transfer from control of the Mardenley properties to the Havreford Mr. Storage property. And as part of that, the half on Gans's property will, will be under that control. So the attorneys who are working on the land transfer are addressing that issue, and we'll be able to provide the township with an easement that indicates that that is free and clear access for anyone who wants to get into that development, including the fire trucks that would, would have to enter into our access road that we're providing for fire access to the back of our building. The other comments are, appear to be relatively minor. I will say that we did see the fire department or fire code officials comment about adding a fire hydrant at our entrance. We're proposing to do that. We're working with Aqua to determine the size and condition of the main that gets back into that development. But we are, we are in a position to agree to provide fire hydrant for that location. It may have to come off of Lawrence Road. We're not sure yet, but there'll be a fire hydrant there. And I can answer any of the other questions, but we believe we've pretty much addressed the comments to a point where we're, we're looking forward to the Planning Commission giving us a recommendation tonight.
Where would that hydrant be located exactly?
It would probably be located in between the two driveways, depending on how far back that existing main goes.
When you say, can you just, like, point to it on the plan? Okay.
The circular driveway is our entrance. The straighter driveway is the fire department access. It would probably be located in between those two points.
And that's where the fire marshal or fire official requested it be located?
He, he just asked for a hydrant in this area.
Okay.
The better surface is probably...
Okay. You just want to touch base with him, make sure he's satisfied with where you end up putting it?
I will do that.
Any comments, Jesse?
Yeah, could you point, sorry, I didn't catch you while you were in front of the plan. Could you point to where on the plan you were requesting the waiver about the sidewalk? I just want to...
In that same area, you have the, the circular driveway that comes in, then there's a short distance in between that and the 20-foot access, which is up against the property that we own. And then our, the rest of the property line is about 10 to 15 feet away from this driveway. We are curbing this driveway out onto the street, so there will be some curb there, but we're just asking for a waiver for the sidewalk from our property line to that driveway in between the two driveways and the curbing in between the two driveways. And part of the reason we're looking for the curbing is because this is going to be able for that truck to make that turn in there if he has to.
And along, everything along Lawrence is what you're asking to kind of reserve until the 1315 property comes before?
Yes, but there is sidewalk there, and there's an existing sidewalk there now.
I, I think you, hold on, I'm sorry. I think you asked the questions that were concerning me, and I really do appreciate you bringing that port in and showing us how you think it's going to work, because...
Thank you.
It's critical.
So you see, you addressed most of the items in your letter. Are you going to take care of this item about the elevations on the walls?
Yeah, I, I think the issue, a wall has two bottoms, and I think the draftsman just didn't show the, the second bottom, so, yeah, we will address that.
I'll be interested.
Yep.
Did I hear you mention that you requesting a waiver for a street lighting factor?
We are, yes.
May I ask why?
We're, we're going to provide a light on site that light illuminates our driveway entrance, which will, in essence, provide some lighting to the street, and we'll show a, a lighting pattern for, that was one of the comments, to show the isolux drawings. So you'll be able to see that there will be some light benefit from that.
Along that back wall, will there be any street lighting?
No, but there'll be a building, there'll be a light on the building.
Okay.
For security purposes as well.
Thank you.
Okay, last time you were in, you talked about trading the open space requirement for the grant of a 15-foot-wide access easement?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I just want to throw something out to the board, okay? We have our Eagle Road design standards, okay? And the section along Lawrence Road technically is not within the Eagle Road corridor that we studied, but it certainly is connected to it, especially this development. So my, my thoughts is that, that maybe we could, when that development occurs, we could request that those design standards be applied to that stretch of Lawrence Road. I think that way, we'd have that whole industrial area covered except for the pizza shop on the corner in, in Swift Farm. Okay?
How far down?
Just...
Here. Okay, to the...
Yeah.
Just right there, right?
Up to McNally. So it's something to consider now. Here's my point. If we just consider the 28,000 square feet that you're transferring from property A to property B, okay? And apply the, the township formula for fee and lieu of open space, it comes to like I don't know that that 15-foot easement is necessarily worth $23,000, and I don't know if I can even ask this, but if, if, if it's something that the township commissioners would be agreeable to, I would like to have that money, and maybe we can give you some credit for easement, but some part of that money be applied to the construction of those Eagle Road design standards on Lawrence Road when the time comes.
So that it would offset it. Great.
Great idea. Absolutely.
No, oh, I'm sorry.
I own the property of Lawrence Road, so I talk a lot...
Mike Mardenley from Direct Paint, Bob and Joe, everybody, 1315. I don't know the design standards because I haven't applied for land development yet.
Okay, they're the same thing that we built along the frontage of the YMCA.
Okay, do I have to duplicate the YMCA?
Yes.
Those are the standards.
Same thing that was built along the frontage of the original Mr. Storage property. The sidewalk, the fencing, and the, and the, and the piers, and the couple, couple lights.
Okay, so you want the curb from Lawrence Road to go around Tony Roni's and go towards...
But you don't have to do that part. You only have to do along your property.
Okay.
Okay?
But you want it to be continuous as in design?
At some point, we'd like that to happen, since that's all an industrial area.
Industrial. Your property is contingent to the rest of the Eagle Road area.
So you want the light industrial? Okay, get back in.
Okay. Havreford Mr. Storage is willing to, to work with the township to come up with that fee.
Okay.
And then that fee would be applied to the improvements that 13...
Is that 30,000 worth $21,000?
I'm sorry, if I could just interrupt everybody for just a second so I can kind of put, maybe steer this in a different direction. The open space fee and lieu of goes towards our parks.
I understand.
I, I don't know that that necessarily applies for the streetscape improvement, which would be more of a streets and sidewalks, public works.
Okay, if it, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I mean, I just thought...
I just wanted to kind of...
You know, technically, we don't, that's not part of our corridor, so, but it certainly would dress that area up even more so than it will be. Just thinking out the box a little bit. Where do you stand with EPA, Dennis?
We have an email from EPA.
I gave it to Chuck. We have an email from EPA. Chuck can read if you want.
I think we could just summarize it.
It's a paragraph.
They're looking for some additional information from us. In general, they're in approval of what we're doing.
So you're headed in the right direction?
We're headed in the right direction with EPA.
You'll satisfy that.
Yes, and I think there's some question that Chuck had about DEP as well, so we just need to work that out. But EPA is kind of driving the boat here with this.
Chuck, anything you would like to add?
I don't think so.
Actually, no, but I did have one more thing. Under the zoning comments of the review letter, item one requests that the land, I'm sorry, that, that there be a partial waiver, I believe, from the landscape, well, the landscape buffer isn't included on the plans at all, actually, which the zoning hearing board did make a condition of approval that the landscape buffer be installed. So is that going to be addressed?
There, there is a landscape buffer proposed on the Lawrence Road side of the building.
Okay.
In the form of a staggered row of Arbivide, and that is part of our development plan.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment or a question? Okay. Anybody else on the board?
How, how close are you to coming back to us for 1315?
He'd like me to be here next week, but, or next two weeks, but I'm, I'm a little further away than that.
Maybe not August, but maybe September?
Probably... Uh, probably October.
Okay.
I'm, we're, we're going to need some zoning relief because there's steep slopes along Lawrence Road that we're going to need zoning. So we're going to be, we're going to be tied up there probably for a month or so.
Remember, we only have one meeting next month anyway, maybe the second, end of the month. Those are the summertime.
I think everyone's anxious to get, get this started and then move, move on to the next project.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that the, we recommend final approval for the Havreford Mr. Storage subdivision and land development plans to the Board of Commissioners. Plans prepared by Herman McComby Jr., PE dated May 20th, 2019, last revised July 5th, 2019, subject to the following conditions. One, that all the remaining comments contained in the Panoni review letter dated July 24th, 2019 be addressed to satisfaction of the township. And number two, fee in lieu of open space be provided for the 28,000, 27,850 square feet of ground that's being transferred between parcels A and B. And that, to the extent that fee could be used, be set aside for street improvements along the Lawrence Road frontage of parcel A. And track one, I'm sorry. And that final approval be received from the EPA before any, and the fire marshal before any construction begin on the property.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'm so sorry, I missed. Who seconded that?
I second.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdomondo?
Yes.
Mr. Point?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We have left off Houston.
For August?
I didn't see any package.
Okay. We do the maintenance?
Do we have Kelly?
Kelly? Do we have minutes?
We do not.
No minutes, so accept the motion to adjourn.
Uh, we got one other thing on the agenda.
We do? Oh.
We do?
It's not on this list.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry.
Surprised. What is that?
Like in the past, township is applying for another grant and we need a recommendation from the planning commission. So I will hand this out to you, but it's a grant to do some pedestrian improvements at the intersection of Havreford Road and Ardmore Avenue. The, the state is doing the, the bridge on Ardmore Avenue, but their work is not extending into the intersection. So the idea was to make that intersection a little more pedestrian friendly and install in, enlarge the island there, just around the tree, make a little traffic calming there, put in new ADA ramps, crosswalks, new signals, something similar to an adaptive controller in, in that area to synchronize the signal and upgrade sidewalks in that area too, so.
And interestingly enough, when they did the bridge at Havreford and College, they were able to add the adaptive signals that then tied in with Buck and all the way up to the, to the hospital in Brent Mar. They're working now on doing the same kind of adaptive things at Landover and County Line in Havreford. And by coming down here, that coordination is just unbelievable. They were able, when they were changing everything out as they closed Ardmore Avenue, a man sat down there for five to seven hours. I pulled over and took a look at the machinery and he's adjusting everything and all of a sudden, there are left-hand turn signals that didn't exist an hour before. And it's just remarkable what they're doing. So this is a wonderful idea.
Yeah, this is good.
It's not, it's not exactly that adaptive system. It's a little different. There's idiosyncrasies in that whole corridor, but.
Okay. Do you need any right of way to do this? And weren't those signals updated several years ago when Ardmore Avenue and Darby Road was updated? Were there traffic changes made at this intersection? They put the left turn lane in?
That was a long time ago, I believe, yeah.
That was before the US Open.
First one.
Way back.
Yeah, that's way back, yeah.
Eighty-something.
And look, the signals are kind of antiquated. We're going to put in new controllers, we're, you know, we're, we're going to put in pit crossings and everything, so it just makes sense to do everything at once.
Is the island going to be somewhat of a, like a destination bench or something would be there or would just?
Well, we were told, first of all, we can't touch that tree. So.
Looks like the island is going to be enlarged a little bit.
The island's enlarged to sort of provide like a pedestrian refuge island, like up here across, you know, on Brookline and, and further up by the school and everything. So you're not crossing a whole wide intersection and saying, you know, in one shot.
Good place for a rain guard.
Yeah, could be.
How much are they seeking for the?
725,000, I believe. And the nice thing about this, this match is there's, or this grant is, there's no match for the township. There is cost, but there's no match.
That covers pretty much the cost of the work?
Yeah, I mean.
And the intent is to do this while the bridge is being done?
No. This is, this is.
This is in the future?
These grants are due at the end of, of this month and they probably won't even be acting on until next year. So we're a couple of years out.
Okay. All right, so you need, what, a recommendation from planning commission that they should, township should proceed with this application grant?
Yeah, and there's a letter that needs to be signed, typical letter that we.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the board of commissioners that they proceed with the application grant for traffic improvement project at the intersection of Havreford Road and Ardmore Avenue.
And I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdomondo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. And now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, so Chuck made the motion and Chris seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Thank you.